Flip it over.
Do you want me to give you a second to hit record or?
We're good.
We're good, okay. I will call to order the City of Beelton's Planning Commission for Thursday, June 3rd. Welcome everyone, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Liggett.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Uh, here.
Vice Chair Bloch-Dyke.
Here.
Mayor Hammel.
Here. Reordering of the agenda, no presentations, none. Approval of minutes from the regular planning commission meeting from April 15th.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Um, Vice Chair Bloch-Dyke.
Yes, hi.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Hi.
Commissioner Liggett.
Hi.
Commissioner Mercado.
Hi.
Mayor Hammel.
Hi. Public comments, this is where members of the public can write in to us or give us a speaker slip, and we will read it into the minutes. Claire, are there any general public comments?
None have been received.
Okay, thank you. Consent calendar, none. Continued public hearings, none. New public hearings, none. And other business. Item number two. Information item. Introduction to Complete Streets and update on Living Streets project for Western Highway 246. And we have Ms. Irma presenting tonight.
Thank you, Chair Hammel, members of the planning commission. Before I get started, I'd like Andrea, our planning director, just to make a couple of comments.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Thanks Irma. So, just as Irma mentioned before she gets started, I just wanted to mention that we are, staff is bringing this information, whole item to the, on complete streets, and the, an update on the Living Streets project for Western Highway 246 to the planning commission in response to comments received at previous workshops related to the loose update, at which the planning commission expressed a desire to learn more about the concept of complete street. So we hope that the introductory and informational item tonight is valuable to the commission, and that it provides more context and understanding of what complete streets are, and how they do, and could fit into Beelton in one form or another. So, with that said, although staff, you know, is not the expert on the topic of complete streets, we felt it was important to bring additional information to the planning commission regarding the topic to allow for further discussion. Given this, though, staff may not be able to answer some of the questions you may have after hearing the presentation tonight related to complete streets. However, please feel free to ask questions if you have them, and staff can look into your questions and bring them, bring back additional information at a later meeting, if that is so desired by the planning commission. So, and with that, I'll turn it over to Irma to give her a complete streets presentation.
Sorry. Thank you Andrea. So, um, if we could share the screen for the presentation.
Oh, okay, let me go ahead and play it here. All right. Um, I'm just gonna have to go back a couple slides here, but can everyone see that?
There we go.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, so, um, just to go down to slide two. Um, as Andrea mentioned, this is an information item only today, and it has background that we want to share with you to help you with the future decisions that you will be making on the general plan update to the land use and circulation elements, which we abbreviate LUS for short. And it provides a general overview of complete streets. It's mainly based upon information that I researched on the internet, but it's, as through, the, the information was from generally recognized sources on the internet that are, are the organizations that provide information that other agencies use on the complete streets and smart growth. So it's from the, primarily from the Smart Growth America, and they have a number of coalitions, and the National Coalition on Complete Streets is one of them. So, I just wanted to start by that. And at the end, very end of this presentation, I, I included some copyright information that it is licensed through the Creative Commons for nonprofit use, as long as we provide attributes appropriately to where the information came from. And so I have done that, and I just wanted to start off with that. But, um, so we're providing a overview of complete streets. Your agenda packet contained an overview of complete streets along with many fact sheets on the various elements that go into planning complete streets and what it really means. So, hopefully that will give you some, you know, background and information to research at your leisure, and inspire more questions and items that you'd like to know about in more detail. But mainly, we hope that it will inspire visions and opportunities for the makeover of key roadways in Beelton, utilizing the concept of complete streets, and also to facilitate a discussion amongst the planning commission on these topics, which, you know, will not only enable a conversation, but would also help staff to, you know, understand what areas of concern you may have, what areas you may need more information on, that we could present to you at a future date. Additional presentations, and perhaps bring in technical experts if that is something that is needed. So with that, let's go on to the next slide. So the complete streets concept is to allow for safe travel by those walking, cycling, driving, riding, public transportation, or delivering goods. And the basic policies, it, it's a transportation policy along with a design approach that integrates people and place in the planning, design, and construction, operation, and maintenance of transportation network. So, it's an overall concept that we use at the ground level and designing streets all over town, basically, and looking at complete streets as a tool to solve some of the issues that we may run across in the city that we feel need a complete streets makeover. And, so basically, complete streets help ensure that streets put safety over speed. And this is important because we do have speed problems in the city, and that has caused problems with accidents. It, complete streets help balance the needs of different modes of travel, and we'll talk about like multimodal transportation such as bus, bicycling, walking. People with disabilities may have different ways of mobility. And also, you know, microtransit and transit on demand, which, as people get used to using more public transit, there may be a need for not so much the personal automobile, but travel options on demand. And complete streets also support land uses, the economy, cultures, and the natural environment. Okay. So, um, let's see. What are complete streets? Complete streets are streets for everyone, no matter who they are, and, or how they travel. And, so, these are just visuals. And I'd like to mention that most of these slides will be visuals. Not a lot of content. If there's content, I will summarize, but, um, so, complete streets really are meant to be safe, comfortable, and convenient. Um, going on to the next slide. Um, so what does a complete street look like? It will look different in a rural or small town than it does in a highly urban area. So, you know, many of the examples of complete streets use visuals from urban areas, and some of the visuals that are in the presentation today, maybe from a highly urban area. I tried to use ones that are from more suburban, or some, ones that are more applicable to Beelton, but the concepts are still the same. It's balancing transportation needs and how to do that, to make it safe and convenient for everyone. And each solution is unique, and it responds to its community context. No singular design approach works, but they will, you know, designs may include, you know, different sidewalk treatments, why, bike lanes, or wide paved shoulders, special bus lanes, mobility hubs, accessible public transportation stops, and these ideally will serve a number of different transit options. Frequent and safe street crossings, something that we're, you know, trying to address on Highway 246. And some of the, you know, the solutions we're looking at are, you know, more median islands, curvus extensions, narrower travel lanes. So, just a couple of visuals. You know, while most of our town is not as rural as this picture, but we certainly feed into a regional network that includes more rural roads, and, you know, if we can envision the roadway going eastward to Solvang, we can certainly see that there could be opportunities for bike lane, pedestrian, and, and bike lane. And how that comes into the city of Beelton is something that we'll need to consider. And on the other side of town, heading westward, there's certainly the opportunity because the roads are as rural as they are on the, on the east side. And the next slide will show cyclists on bridges. And we do have bridges in town, and they are not all as accessible to pedestrians or cyclists as, as they could be. Main streets also provide opportunities for complete streets, and really, main streets are, are the center of a community that, you know, needs to have traffic accommodated, and it needs to have pedestrians accommodated, and bike travel, and transit. So there's a lot of opportunity there. And there's a couple of other slides later on that I will show on other ways of treatments that we consider in the avenue flags, actually, for the main street, but, um, protected bike lanes. It's something that, you know, we could look at. Certainly, sharing the road physically with motor vehicles is not, not as safe as having a protected area, a buffer between the vehicles. And just a few more slides that show, you know, one slide that shows.
Little circle.
Hot traffic circles and roundabouts, I know they're sometimes popular things, they have been used successfully in our region to address traffic issues, and they're part of the complete streets toolkit. So benefits of complete streets. And I sent you out a lot of information in your packet on the benefits of complete streets that were actually from this national coalition. But Caltrans also has, on their website, the benefits of complete streets, and then Caltrans is really starting to pay more attention to the benefits of complete streets and how to incorporate that into local transportation planning. And I picked out some of the benefits that are the most relevant to Beelton, and really, increased transportation choices, economic revitalization, creating livable communities in this 15-minute neighborhood concept, improved safety, that's certainly a concern in our community, and improved health as a result of more opportunities and encouraging people to walk and bicycle. And, of course, less traffic congestion leads to improved air quality and reduced greenhouse gases. And that is some of the impetus behind Caltrans policies in the context of an overall CEQA, global impacts. And, this next slide is just, that shows some of the benefits of increased transportation choices, and there were studies done that in four communities over four years, complete streets resulted in an overall increase in bicycling and walking, and also, not just an increase, but, uh, overall, but increase in utilitarian trips made by foot or on bicycle, which means, you know, walking to do your shopping, like, walking to school, walking to leisure events, and similarly for bicycle trips as well. We're also looking at benefits if we have increased transit opportunities to connect transit to work, to shops, to schools, to homes. And not only to connect transit, but also have transit interface with multimodal travel opportunities. So whether at the last stop between the residents or the last stop between work and shopping, there are what's known as the first and last mile options, where some people walk, but there are those that are not able to, or it's not as convenient to walk. So how do we solve the first and last mile issues? Whether that's by transportation on demand, or different, or options such as better bicycle lanes. And, but overall, the goal is to create smooth, predictable transit trips for transit vehicles that people can rely on and to interface with other modes of travel. And ultimately, this comes down to providing choices. And I'll just quickly show these slides. Residents are 65% more likely to walk in a neighborhood with sidewalks. Beelton is pretty good with the sidewalks, although there are some areas, some neighborhoods in the community that don't have sidewalks. And certainly, there's certain areas on the edge of town, and even along Highway 246, in certain places where there are no sidewalks, and it's not as conducive to walking. And cities that have more bike lanes have higher levels of bicycle commuting. Well, that's just a natural conclusion, but we are starting to put in like bike lanes. Certainly, our bicycle network needs some enhancement, and our policies are heading in that direction as part of the, not only the general plan circulation element update, but in the Avenue Flag specific plan. And we're participating in the regional setting as we're bike, bike lane alignment. So, you know, we are making progress, but those are the types of things that we are looking at, you know, including in the policies of the general plan update. So, uh, next slide just shows the benefits of providing choices. And this, this slide is from Boulder, Colorado. They made consistent investment in complete streets over 20 years, and it has resulted in measurable results of what, what complete streets can do. Transit uses increased, walking has increased, bicycling has increased. Transit uses increased, walking has increased, bicycling has increased, bicycle commutes have increased. And I just thought this particular photo was interesting as well because there's solar panels over the parking and over the walkways as well. So it's integrating not only transit, transportation choices, but it's addressing other environmental benefits as well. Again, complete streets and multimodal transportation provides options. It can reduce transportation expenses if families and individuals have adequate access to public transit, and public transit can include access to trains. We do have a train network that runs, and it's supplemented by three-way buses to Amtrak. And, you know, those can be integrated better into our regional transportation network. Let's see, next slide. And I included this slide because it's, it's when you think about it, it's obvious, but sometimes people don't think about it, that every trip starts and ends with walking. And I mentioned before that there's first mile, first and last mile solutions that we need to look at. How do people walk to get to the transit mode that they use? Well, walking to your car is the most obvious, but people could walk a little bit further and pick up different transit solutions. Next slide just shows how far people will walk to destinations. And this is, again, this is, this slide actually is for the centers, is from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. So according to some of their studies, people will, 46% of the people will walk a mile to church or school, and 1% will walk three to four miles. So having the opportunity to go one mile, which is about a 15-mile walk, I'm sorry, 15-minute walk to church or school or work or shopping, certainly is a reachable goal in a community the size of Buellton. We're not that large, and we can address some of these opportunities. And as long as we make it convenient and safe, provide connection to transit, provide multimodal opportunities, and we can integrate these solutions. Okay, benefits, benefits to the economy. So we showed these slides during the Avenue Flag specific plan about Lancaster, the benefits to their economy from makeover of their, of Lancaster Boulevard. And this actually showed up in many of the complete streets studies that, case studies that were in the material that I viewed. And I just think it's important to look at the economic benefits from complete streets. So if we look at the next slide, this is what Lancaster ended up creating out of a wide, wide roadway that they took advantage of the median, which we were looking at for Avenue Flags. But really, if we look at Highway 246, it has opportunities too. Maybe not such a wide median, maybe a narrower median, but the basic goal is to reduce speeding. It will lead to fewer crashes. It'll lead to improve pedestrian safety and bicycle safety. But it also enables a makeover, an aesthetic makeover of the corridor that can attract new businesses, provide new jobs. And in Lancaster, the vacancy rate for their businesses along Lancaster Boulevard, where this upgrade was accomplished, you know, the vacancy rate dropped and their sense tax revenue was up. So we're doing this on the avenue, but Highway 246 and other areas of town provide opportunities to, for economic revitalization as a result of complete streets. Next slide is livable communities. This concept of walkable communities, the 15-minute neighborhood, how far you can walk in one mile, creating this neighborhood that's basically a livable community. Well, it leads to happier communities. Residents of walkable communities are most, more likely to be socially engaged, and they report being in better health as well. And let's go on to the next slide. So this is interesting. This was a quote, actually, from a former Secretary of Transportation at the US level. So who quoted, who stated that to him, "Livability means being able to take your kids to school, go to work, see a doctor, drop by the grocery store or post office, go out to dinner and a movie, and play with your kids at the park, all without having to get into your car." So many small towns have this opportunity. Certainly, many towns in Europe do provide this opportunity. And a community like Buellton can certainly achieve this with planning, complete streets, and some of the other tools that we may have that we will be looking at as part of the general plan update. So complete streets also mean improved safety for all users. This would be drivers of motor vehicles, not just cars, but commercial vehicles as well. Improved safety for bicyclists, pedestrians, children, older adults, and pedestrian, people with disabilities. It's interesting on this next slide that traffic fatalities, and this statistic is from back in 2013, but yes, people in cars had a high level of traffic fatalities, but the next highest were people walking. So pedestrian fatalities were the next highest. And after that, were people on bikes. So we do have the opportunity to improve some of the pedestrian crossings and pedestrian facilities that we have in Buellton to reduce the number of pedestrian fatalities, which we sadly have had in Buellton. Again, wide street. So benefits to children, providing dedicated safe spaces for bicycling and walking help kids be active and gain independence. And I think this was a comment made at one of our general plan workshops that it would be really nice to have better, safe routes for children to be able to go to school and to be able to walk and bicycle. It would eliminate trips that the parents need to make and taking children to school. And it would certainly help with children being physically active. And this has shown that it being physically active helps kids learn and improve their mental health and reduce obesity. So next slide. Benefits are obvious to older adults. You know, having adults, older adults be able to go out and walk and cycle is definitely a health benefit and also an independence benefit for their independence. As well, for people with disabilities. So we definitely need to make sure that our streets are designed with, to accommodate people with disabilities. And complete streets can reduce the isolation and dependence on others. Just some more statistics. States with the lowest levels of biking and walking have, on the average, the highest rates of obesity, diabetes, and blood pressure. Health benefits, walking 30 minutes, walking or biking 30 minutes of a day, those folks have a lower risk of, women have a lower risk. And a 30-minute bicycle commute is associated with better health in men and other workers. Okay, next slide. Positive impact on the environment. I thought this was an interesting visual that shows 40 people commuting by car versus 40 people in a bus versus 40 people by bicycle. So it just shows how complete streets that do provide choices in transportation can reduce congestion and lead to lesser impacts on the environment. Obviously, benefits to cleaner air are first thing after congestion. But also, the complete streets give the opportunity to, so this will be on the next slide, do give an opportunity to incorporate different methods into street design that are green, you know, have bioswales to accommodate runoff and just help improve environmental sustainability overall and provide protected, more protected crossings as well. There's just a little bit of background on California policies. So the Complete Streets Act was actually adopted back in 2008. And it eventually required, phased in the requirement that complete streets policies be a part of the circulation element of a general plan. So anytime there's a substantial update to the general plan, complete streets need to be addressed. Now, we do have some complete streets policies in our current general plan, but they, they need to be enhanced, brought up to address some of the issues that we are currently facing in Buellton. The most significant items that we're dealing with right now are at the bottom of this list, which is SB 743, which states that levels of service or LOS generally shall not be used as a significance threshold for CEQA. And VMT, which is Vehicle Miles Travel, as of 2020 is now the new metric that is being used to measure traffic impacts in CEQA. So this is something that we are incorporating into our circulation element and coming up with metrics, thresholds of significance to aid staff to, in measuring traffic impacts as a result of development projects that may be coming before us. So complete streets policies that are incorporated into local planning as well as the general plan ensure that the entire right-of-way is planned, designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to provide safe access for all users. And it's not just for the main thoroughfares such as Highway 246 and Avenue Flag and McMurray. It's really for all streets as applicable. Whenever there's changes and improvements to the local street network, complete streets policies are taken into consideration as well. All right, let's just go on to the next slide here. So complete streets, as a result, is not just one special street project. It's not a design prescription. It's not a mandate for immediate retrofit. It's really, it's an incremental approach that has long-term results. And other issues need to be addressed along with complete streets such as land use. You know, what kind of land uses are in proximity, encouraging mixed use, really encouraging transit-oriented development that makes it easier to provide public transit because there's higher density typically in transit-oriented development. It addresses transportation concerns, and we need to address this concept of transportation demand. What solutions do we have for that? So some of the trade-offs that we're looking at, I mentioned before, level of service, LOS, and traffic. So LOS typically measures congestion and operation, operational metrics at intersections. Well, with the VMT metrics that are coming, that we need to use now, the focus is more on person, mobility for all modes and not just congestion as a result of more cars going through an intersection. And we need to look at project benefits that actually may outweigh the effects to roadway capacity and LOS. So this is a concept that maybe some congestion at an intersection isn't all bad. It's basically slowing down traffic, so it's making it more safe for pedestrians and cyclists. And it's also increasing, potentially increasing exposure to businesses that are along those roadways. So if you're driving by a business at 35 or 45 miles an hour, you're less likely to take note of a business or what is in the storefront. Then if you're driving at 25 miles on a roadway and you need to stop at an intersection, you will be looking around more. So there may be other trade-offs that aren't as bad as once thought. So sometimes when we're considering roadways, we've looked at widening roadways so that we have adequate capacity for a lot of cars. But perhaps narrowing roadways is not such a bad thing. There gives the opportunity for more frontage improvements, public improvements, and some land planning opportunities, taking a look at the streetscape and increased land that might be available as a result of roadway narrowing. And access to business. So it's often brought up that, well, we need to provide really good access to businesses through our roadways so that pedestrians getting out of their cars can get to the businesses safely. And yes, that is very important. But access to business can be provided in other fashions, and we're looking at that along, what we've been looking at that in the Avenue Flag, and we are going to be looking at that in circulation element along Highway 246, not just on the western end of town, but on the eastern end of town and along McMurray as well. Similarly, with parking. You know, parking in various sections of town, we've taken parking off of the major streets. But some, and I think some of the material that was in your packet also mentions that parking actually can be looked at as a buffer between pedestrians and cyclists and traffic. And parking can be considered a, on-street parking actually can be or shared public resource. So just new ways of looking at things. And then finally, a trade-off, and this is something that we've actually talked about with our general plan consultants, our traffic consultant and also our consultant preparing the environmental document is, we're looking at this notion of coming up with growth projections. And because we're not changing the land use in the general plan at this point, we're only doing a cleanup, there are not that many different scenarios that we're able to actually come up with that may change in community growth. We have a kind of a finite community at this point with the existing land use not looking at a lot of growth. So, you know, when one of our meetings, we said, well, perhaps we focus on community character and quality of life values in town and how we can actually enhance those. And complete streets And complete streets really, you know, is one of those tools that can help calm traffic, create walkable neighborhoods, increase community interaction, and really enhance the quality of life in Buellton. All right, well, let's move on. So as I mentioned before, complete streets has been incorporated into Buellton's local street design guidelines. But enhanced complete streets policies will be addressed in the circulation element update that we're doing right now. And the trade-offs that I mentioned in the prior slide, these will be considered. And they will be issues that will be brought back to the Planning Commission to consider as well as we move forward with the general plan update process. Which brings us to the next slide. Buellton is looking at a livable street project on the western portion of Highway two forty-six. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Rose just to give us an update. I have got material that Rose provided. There's three slides here. And Rose, if you're available to get on board with the presentation here.
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can't hear you. All right, I think we're trying to address, there's Rose.
I don't know why my microphone is not working, but that's all.
Okay, well, we can see you.
Yeah, so the past couple of years, actually, and we haven't had frequent meetings, but we've had two different meetings with Caltrans. Kind of, as we know, the process in working with Caltrans is kind of long. So we've been trying to meet with strategic departments in Caltrans to see what they'd be willing to accept and what type of concepts and projects would they be open to to looking at some kind of complete streets on the west end of Highway two forty-six. So it's, I said, it's been a slow process. We've been working with SB CAG, who's our regional transportation providers as well. And one of the things it boils down to is looking at concepts is going to boil down to additional studies required by Caltrans. They're all for the city, trying to propose projects that would implement different strategies to potentially reduce street width, definitely address safety, and reduce speeding along the west end of Highway two forty-six. And their critical concern is capacity for the roadway. So that's where additional studies would need to be created. So knowing that there's more work than just concept before they'd even actually vet any ideas we're talking about, SB CAG staff had put together a grant application to do this study. And they're calling the project Highway two forty-six Livable Street Project. And that was submitted under the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant earlier this year. The grant program has twenty-nine and a half million dollars of funding. So it's usually in these types of funds, it's highly competitive and there's practically billions of dollars of funding requests for the small amount that they've got processed. We won't hear until the end of June. We just had another transportation meeting this morning and Caltrans staff did advise everybody that it will be the end of June before we hear any any information regarding that grant program. So if we were to obtain the grant, work could start as early as fall of twenty twenty-one to do any additional studies for it. Irma, if you could switch the screen. I know this is pretty wordy, but this is just a description of the project that was submitted as part of the grant application. There's no concept plans or anything fancy. It's more just description. The limits of the work of the study would be Highway two forty-six between Avenue Flags and the west end, which is basically Riverview Drive. So the distance is approximately one mile. And, you know, again, we are looking to try to reduce the lane widths as appropriate and try to increase safety and reduce traffic speeds in that area. Because we want to make, we already have bike lanes that we were able to get Caltrans to install at a prior project. But, you know, it's not enough to reduce the speeds as we see it right now. The city has done improvements in the past, as you've all noted. We've received an active transportation grant that included the construction for the flashing beacons and painted crosswalk at Highway two forty-six and Sycamore Road, which did have that unfortunate accident right at the completion of the project. But it was not actually in the crosswalk. So I do want to make that note on that particular incident. But, but the creation of that, the installation of that crosswalk and the flashing beacons obviously is not enough to reduce or the speeds that we're seeing on that west end. So we want to still do more work on this west end of Highway two forty-six. So if we are able to get this grant, the study would include additional workshops, community workshops, so that there is, you know, additional input from the public and, you know, the citizens and residents of Buellton to come up with different strategies that may be feasible for that location. We'd be working with SB CAG and Caltrans closely on this to come up with a concept for this corridor that would meet our needs for the city and locally, but still comply with what Caltrans would require as far as their capacity requirements. And we hope to get something vetted out of that from Caltrans so that we can actually move forward after this as a next step to actually have a project we can design and go after real dollars to implement that portion. So that's something that we're hoping with next. I think the next slide is just an aerial photo of the strip of aerials. I mean, that one-mile stretch is quite large. The eastern half to a third is a mixture of residential and commercial areas. And then the west half is all residential. So we've got a mix of, with, in addition to different land uses in that area. And through this large stretch, we have one intersection that actually has, that's signalized, and that's industrial way. So that's kind of in a nutshell what we're looking to accomplish in that livable street project. And hopefully, we'll have some positive news at the end of the month.
Great, all righty, thanks, Rose. And, you know, before we move away from this aerial view, I just wanted to go back to mention something I found really interesting on the project description that was written up. And it's where it says that the highways, the Highway two forty-six, the highways with pavement width is approximately eighty feet wide, four through lanes and a two-way left turn lane. And pairing that to the US one oh one interchange at two forty-six, it has four through lanes only and a total pavement width of sixty-five feet. So basically, Highway two forty-six is wider than US one oh one at the end of the day. And it goes through residential areas and are the heart of our downtown. Anyway, I thought that was interesting, just to make a note of. The next slide, I know, Rose, this is not part of your presentation, but I just wanted to leave a visual of things that we, I don't know, could be looking at or people have looked at as solutions on such roadways, such as Highway two forty-six, protected bike lanes. I know I had this slide earlier, but, you know, really, protected bike lanes are really the safest way to go. Safer pedestrian crossings. We do have some medians along Highway two forty-six, but creating pedestrian refuges, so they don't have to be darting across the street there and there's places to go. And narrowing down the travel lanes by bulb-outs, producing, providing turnouts for buses rather than having the buses stop right in travel lanes. Those are the kind of things that we'll be looking at. Also, this concept of a mobility hub. Our traffic consultant had mentioned this on a couple of his presentations and we were all curious what a mobility hub could look like. And a multimodal mobility hub could be as small as this and it could fit into some reclaimed land along Highway two forty-six if we narrowed lanes potentially. And it could provide stop, bus stop. It could provide bicycle facilities. It could even provide a charging station, pop-up commercial, little, you know, corner coffee stand. And they've gotten really creative with these mobility hubs. Will definitely provide shelter for the folks waiting for transit, but also provide a pickup place for packages that are being delivered, such as, and we do a lot of ordering online these days. And they provide opportunities. You can see the little structure there in front of the bicycles where you pick up and drop off packages. So anyway, the opportunities are there to look at. And with that, really, the next slide is just Planning Commission discussion, comments, questions, future in-depth topics. And so Patty, if you'd like to kind of have a roundtable discussion with the, if you would like to lead that, or you, you know.
Okay.
With questions or comments or discussion, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Irma, for all the hard work on this and putting it together and giving us this little presentation and workshop. It's very helpful and obviously very timely too as we're going through the land use circulation element and general plan. Is Rose still around? I had kind of just a quick question for her.
She is in the room.
So, you know, I mean, I haven't been around on Planning Commission that long. I think just, well, I guess maybe close to four years. But when I first started, you know, there was always talk about Caltrans and being really slow and really not very flexible on, you know, because the Sycamore Drive and two forty-six intersection has always kind of been a problem. So, but, but with these state bills and so on, do you feel is Caltrans going to be a little bit friendlier on developing, for us to be able to develop complete streets?
They seem receptive to it. I mean, they have a mandate to implement complete streets. They've had it before, you know, we started implementing it. It's just a matter of getting it down and actually implemented through all their different divisions and making that a priority. I think that's the challenge with Caltrans is they have so many different divisions. So when we were trying to meet with them the past couple of years, we were trying to make sure we have a representative from each division in that meeting so that we kind of hit them all at once. Because what tends to happen is, you know, if we just have a project and we were to just submit to Caltrans, you know, for an encroachment or whatnot, it'll get routed to all of them, but we'll only hear back from a few. And then we'll try to address those, you know, comments and concerns from those. And then we'll hear back from others. And sometimes they conflict, you know, and that's where the issue was. So one of the strategies we did a long time ago when we had, when we started with the two forty-six and Sycamore intersection was we received a grant, was it sustainable? No, 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 it was a local Measure A safety grant to do just concept, design, and collaboration through Caltrans so that we can work with them and all their departments to see, okay, we know we need something to help with pedestrian crossing safety, you know, along two forty-six. And these are the strategic intersections we want, primarily Sycamore and two forty-six. And we worked with them, I think, for over, for about a year and a half, two years, until we received an approved concept that we could actually not waste rest of any other monies that the city puts towards a project. And we had a realistic and feasible design that we knew that they were going to likely approve down the road as opposed to something that, you know, it just goes kind of back and forth with. So trying to work with them at the very beginning like this will get us closer to a project that can be approved. So I think there will be, there'll probably be some additional discussions of what they're willing to see in their right-of-way. But they should be open to the concept of complete streets in general. Again, the thing that's limiting, the limiting factor for them to us that they've mentioned is making sure that we don't reduce their ultimate capacity for that road. And I don't have, and they didn't provide us with a specific number, you know, that says this is, it must be, you know, ten thousand vehicles or whatever. Show the study as far as what concepts are feasible and that meets their needs and our needs and we can show that it still, you know, meets the capacity requirements. So it's kind of going to be a little bit back and forth and working with them. You know, so it's not going to ever be a straight, you know, submittal shot with them.
Right.
Working with them. We'll know what the city ultimately wants, you know, and we'll just keep working back and forth until something flushes out that will work.
Okay, that sounds good, actually. Sounds like they will be a little bit more flexible. It'll just take time for all of us.
Exactly, exactly. That's the hindsight on that. It's going to take time. It's not going to be next.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. I'm just gonna, I'll turn it over to the commissioners for questions, comments for Irma or Rose. We'll start with Commissioner Mercado.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I do have one question for either Irma or Rose. When you showed us the Lancaster picture downtown, was that their main drag? And I know at one time, we looked at it both at planning and at city. And we had many options of what we wanted to consider for Avenue of the Flags. And our big hang-up always has been that Caltrans has had proprietary as everybody comes off one oh one. Do you think at any time they would relinquish that? So A, that traffic would slow down there at the very beginning of Avenue of the Flags? And as we continue to develop Avenue of the Flags across two forty-six, something like this, would that be possible?
I can take a stab at that, or Rose, if you would like to. But I know that as part of the Avenue Flags project, Rose had mentioned that we were having conversations with Caltrans and they're really reluctant, but it's not impossible. There are certain things that we can do. And we can start controlling. we can start controlling the um speeds and the improvements that we are putting in as we go into town. So basically, we can control what we do and luckily we have opportunity there with all the medians. Um, you know, past um RT Buell Drive that we can control what we do with that. So if we slow the speeds down sufficiently, there will be an some, somewhat of an impact. Um, and some transition issues will have to be addressed. And I think that we made some progress and Rose, if you have anything to add to that. Um, I, I think that with the change and what we're hearing from our traffic consultants with the change in policies and requiring that vehicle miles traveled be used as a metric, the VMT be used as a metric for evaluating CEQA impacts. Um, we're going to see a lot more focus on what uh, what cities could actually do and will require things such as complete streets to be considered. And it's a Caltrans policy, so ultimately, it's gonna get to the point where Caltrans is gonna need to, to be flexible because it's their own policies that, that we are trying to implement.
Right, right. And then with, uh, I know Rose was touching on this, so uh, I on two forty-six, because it is a major thoroughfare for traffic from people coming from Long Poak and Santa Barbara, um, is, is um, are they willing to concede some, like, in between that area of Sycamore Drive and till you get to uh one oh one, uh, to make that a more a street that's more livable, as they say? Is that gonna be an option for us?
Yes, that's what, that's what we're hoping for, provided we can prove to them that it doesn't impact their capacity requirements. Um, they seem open to it.
Oh, good.
And then the challenge will be funding.
Right, right, funding, always. And thank you, Irma, for a great presentation.
My pleasure. Uh, I would just like to add um, one comment to that. So we're looking at, um, as part of the scenarios to study in the um environmental impact report that, that is being done, um, that will be done for the general plan update. We're actually looking at studying as an option, what would happen if we did implement some of these um, ideas that we have, that we'd like to see, the vision that we would like to see for Highway two forty-six. And the thought behind that is that we'd like to study it. We'd like to examine uh on, on our end, how this will impact, you know? Is there really a demand for such capacity that there is, that there currently is available on Highway two forty-six? It certainly wasn't. It was designed for a far greater volume of traffic than there is currently traveling on um Highway two forty-six. So we are thinking that it would be important for us to study it under the EIR process, under CEQA. Um, and to be able to demonstrate to Caltrans when we come back to the table to talk to them, to say, well, we've studied it and these, this is the result of our studies that shows, you know, this will benefit the community and, you know, the capacity, um, the volume isn't there to support the capacity perhaps that the roadway is designed for. So those are the things that we're looking at as part of the uh general plan update.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado. Uh, Commissioner Leggett. Questions, comments?
Yes, uh, thank you, Irma. That was a very nice presentation. I'm actually currently teaching a class in walkability in urban design. Uh, that's the smart growth, new urbanism, complete streets are actually the foundational theories. Uh, so I really appreciate that we're thinking about this and actually sincerely, you know, thinking about uh implementing some of this. It's actually quite exciting to me. So I agree with everything you presented. I, those values are similar to mine. A couple questions. I had a bunch of questions. Um, Rose was able to answer a lot of those. I did not realize that we'd already submitted a grant to really move forward on this, so I'm happy with that. I didn't know we were that aggressively at the stage of pursuing it, so that makes me happy and excited. Along with the traffic study, I wonder if there's any other assessments that can be used to demonstrate the need for complete streets? I know that there's a matrix, we actually give a metrics, we actually sign a numerical value for how walkable streets are. Um, those, those are geared towards more urban, commercial streets. So I'm not sure if there's a metrics used for more suburban highways. Um, but if there is, that could be a good stat to have to provide Caltrans to help reinforce the need for this. Again, I know there's one for urban. I'm not sure about the suburban. Quite one question. Right now, you're updating the general plan with this dialogue of complete streets. Do you think that needs to be completed before Caltrans will give us permission or city will grant permission to implement these strategies if they're not currently in the plan?
Well, I, I, we do have a level of complete streets policies um that we've had on the books for the past few years, and Rose can address this a little bit better than I can, but um because we've been required to incorporate them in the design of our roadways. It's just that for Buellton, because of some of the um, unique circumstances that we have with Highway two forty-six, those complete streets uh policies that we have, they don't go far enough. I mean, could, if you look at some aspect of, uh, some segments of um Highway two forty-six, you, one could say that it meets complete streets. It has a bike lane, it has bus stops, it provides a, you know, interface between those two, two modes of travel other than a private vehicle, which is the definition of, do you really address multimodal travel? But is it really addressing Buellton? It, certainly, we do not have a safe situation on Highway two forty-six for pedestrians or cyclists. Um, so our policies just, they don't go far enough, and that's what we're looking at um, in this.
But that won't constrain the ability to implement something that's more
Nope.
Secure or
No, that, yeah, it absolutely will not. Um, also because Caltrans already has that po- policy indoctrinated into their, to their program. So that, that's, that won't be a problem.
Okay. My last comments are, you know, I really think that would, this would be effective, particularly coming in from Long Poak. Having a, a median perhaps offers an opportunity to have some sort of monument, you know, proclaiming that we're here in Buellton. I think there's a small sign now, so it could be a great entrance into the town, um, with a median, more vegetated buffers on the sidewalks, make it more comfortable. Um, uh, there's tons of opportunity. Right now, you drive into town and can't quite tell you're in town yet. There's walls with residential, so really vamping that street, I think, would make a special arrival and turn would enhance, you know, Buellton as a whole. So yeah, those are my comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I like that last idea, that welcome to Buellton or something, identifying us. Um, let's see, Commissioner Sarkia, you wanna go next?
Sure. Yeah, I like what the Commissioner Leggett said about um, welcome to Buellton. I'd like to see um um, if we're gonna do center mediums to for two forty-six, I'd like to see more trees in there. So visually, you're coming into Buellton. You see, welcome to Buellton, and you see tree, not just uh, an open suburb that I can just drive through and get to that one oh one. You know, something that's physically, you know, visually pleasant and helps, helps slow these folks down. And uh, the, the, back during the, for your presentation, you, you talked about uh getting kids to school from our, uh, our town. The school spends annually probably a hundred thousand dollars on busing our kids, not just from Santa Rosa and, and West two forty-six, but just the kids that, that live within uh, Second Street and, and uh Avenue of the Flags are being bused because it's just a safer route. And, 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 and of course, we've better bus them in from uh uh, Thumbelina because of the highway, but uh, the, the one oh one. But um, yeah, the, the more we can slow cars down, uh, make it more comfortable for pedestrians and, and bicycles, the better our town's gonna be and the better our lives will be. Like your presentation.
Great, thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Blockdike.
Well, the, the negative thing about being at the end is having all the fun they're stolen from you by people like Aaron and Marcio and Hart. And uh, and it all sounded really good. Um, all of Aaron's ideas were fantastic. And of course, I'm, I'm for complete streets. I'd love to see uh two forty-six narrowed. Um, ultimately though, we didn't talk about, but you know, I think we still need a signal at Sycamore. I, I don't think there's any way around that. This, you know, people are still walking across that road and they're not even looking at the cars. They, they have a false sense of safety when they push that button. And I, I, I don't know if I, I might drive diet more than anybody here because I live, you know, I work at, I live on Sycamore and I work at the nursery and I'm coming back. I get on, I get on two forty-six and people are driving seventy miles per hour by the nursery. And uh, they do not slow down when they get into Buellton. And I don't know how much of a level of enforcement we, we need to slow it down. I know narrowing the street is gonna slow it down, but I think you need a hard stop at some point, and I think Sycamore Road's the place to do it. So you have a hard stop and then I think it'll slow, it sets the tone for the rest of the town. So anyway, and I like the idea of putting a monument at the beginning of town and what Aaron said and uh and uh, anyway, great presentation, Irma and uh staff. Wonderful.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna reverse the order next time and you'll go first.
There you go.
Um, and, but I agree with you because um, and actually in both of Irma's and Rose's presentation, they both answered a couple of questions that I had. So um, uh, everything, good job. Um, I think we've got some great ideas here. I was just gonna add, um, one of the thing, you know, when we first started with the land use circulation element and stuff, and they had pictures of complete streets and um, but it was, you know, these giant city street, you know, the large city metropolitan area. So I liked um, in your presentation, Irma, in the written presentation about a complete street in a rural area or small town will look quite different from a complete street in a highly urban area. But both are designed to balance safety and convenience for everyone using the road. Anyway, I just liked that and I liked how it kind of summarized my thought process on, you know, how do we incorporate that into our, into our small town? Um, but that's all I have to add. So again, great job on everything and um thank you for doing this for us. I think it makes it so much better and we're more prepared for the next land use uh meeting.
Um, if I may just ask, um, are there any topics that the um commission would like to have more information on or, you know, get into a deeper, a deeper dive on any of these items? Um.
I can't really think of anything. Does anyone have any ideas of that have come up in our past meetings?
I think we're good.
Okay. Oh, and I failed to mention, uh, although this is not a public hearing, Claire, do we have any viewers that have written anything in, questions for this meeting?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think with that, um, we, we finish that off. Again, thanks, Irma and Rose. And I'm sure Kara, Kara and Andrea too, for everything. Um, we'll move on to written communications. There are none. Planning commissioner comments? Does anyone have any general notices or comments or anything? I see no hands up or anything. Okay. I have nothing. Planning director report. Andrea, do you have something for us?
Sure. Thanks, Commissioner Hamel. Um, so just wanted to just mention a little update or just to address the topic. So, you know, with Santa Barbara County um and the state uh likely to see reduced COVID restrictions within the next several weeks, um, it is possible that we could start to see a transition of operations now uh back in person at City Hall. Um, however, when exactly that will occur and what that transition will look like, I don't have much more information than that at this point. Um, so, because we're just kind of in, you know, a waiting pattern, but you know, as you're probably aware, things are starting to look better. So uh, when it comes to the COVID situation, so yay. So uh, we, we will just wait to see uh what happens in the next couple of weeks and what that brings us. And as the, as more information becomes available about that and what that means for um um in-person planning commission meetings in the future and staff being back at City Hall, I will certainly keep the planning commission members apprised of, of that situation as it unfolds. Um, as I mentioned though, you know, at this point, I don't have a whole lot of details of what that'll look like or the timing of that, but uh, given that we are likely to see reduced COVID restrictions in the next several weeks, um, that's increasingly a possibility within the next several months to see a transition. So um, just wanted to um, mention that today. Um, and then just one other um item here I have uh for the planning director report today. Um, an application um has been submitted to modify existing conditional use permit um for the old Burger King site. Um, so a new restaurant called Fire and Vice has submitted an application and that application is currently under review by staff. So um, you know, more to come on that, but um, there is that application that has been submitted. So for now, that's all I have. Um, and that concludes my report. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. Um, with that, we will adjourn our meeting at seven fifteen. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. See you later.